9:19, we are going to resume the meeting a couple of minutes late. So I'm closing the public comment for item number seven and bringing it back to council. And so for comments, each council has five minutes to comment. And I do believe that we've heard a lot. And I want to use my five minutes to start right now to really say, I had a pleasure of meeting quite a few of you the other day. And I hope we connected and I am, I, building community is what we're all about. And I, I heard you. So I also want to clarify a couple of, I think that hurt, maybe I heard it wrong. One of the comments from the Zoom is that according to a city council, to renovate the city council only, the city hall only costs a little bit over $7 million. I'd like to clarify that, maybe I heard it wrong. So I'd like to ask staff, is the $27.5 million is the correct number, at least for the current?
Yeah, $27.5 is the correct.
Okay, and that doesn't include if we want to renovate the Torrey Place to be as emergency operation center?
That's correct, that's a separate project.
How much would that cost if we want to include?
We have four million budgeted?
We have three million budgeted and we are working on refining the, the project scope and cost to try and stay within that $3 million amount.
Understand, thank you very much for the verification. And also, I really like to emphasize, this is the beginning of the process. And this is all about transparency, is we're looking at this at the same time together with all of you. Okay, so, so in, for the, for the purpose of discussion, I would like to make a motion and ask for a second, then we can start to discuss it with some content. Because this is a very large, this is a very large project. It has all the angles from everywhere. So I am writing, I just wrote a motion according to the public comments I heard. So I would like the city clerk to put it on the screen. And this is the motion I would like to make. Direct staff to pursue conceptual development with viable financing strategies for the city hall, including new city hall and/or renovation of existing city hall, where preserving access to publicly owned recreation facilities, including the sports center. Also instruct city staff to research and bring to the public and city council the following. First, examples of successful public-private partnership projects. Just for our reference, because this is a new concept for you and for, almost for everybody here. We've never had one project like this. So let's see what's out there, what's being done, are there really benefits to it? The second is to pursue potential partnerships with Sand Hill Properties per recommendation from Mr. Edward Hirschfield, with Mr. Edward Hirschfield's introduction and connection. Do we still have Mr. Hirschfield here? If not, he, I think he's a 50 something year old residence here. Maybe he has good connections, so it's just a, because the public, he mentioned, I just put in there. So this is my motion, just so that we can start to discuss with a more narrow scope, instead of going all over the place. I would like to have a second so we can start a discussion on this. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, am I asking you or your, do we have a second?
I will second, second it with some modifications.
Sure.
Should I go ahead?
Yes, go ahead with a friendly amendment, absolutely.
And just to clarify, Mayor, this is just the start of our conversation. It does seem to cover many of the concerns that the public brought before us today. If I could just read it out again. Direct staff to pursue conceptual development, not actual development, conceptual development with viable financing strategies that I felt was important in light of our budget situation, including new city hall and/or renovation of existing city hall. So in other words, we're not ruling out any options associated with the city hall, while preserving access to publicly owned recreational facilities, including the sports center. So that means that the sports center will be there as a recreational facility. So that's not being taken away from anyone. And then the city, instruct city staff to research and bring to the public examples of successful public-private partnership projects for reference, and pursue potential partnership, and I, et cetera, et cetera. I wanted to add, not just a potential partnership with Sand Hill Properties, but maybe with other businesses in the area, maybe not in Cupertino, somewhere else. So not, not limited to Sand Hill Properties. And in number one, I would like to see examples of successful private, public-private partnership projects which do not include housing. Because you can have a P3 without housing as an element. But on second thoughts, I do not want to restrict all our options. So I'm, I'm sort of going to leave it the way it is now, with sort of the underlying message that public-private partnership can be of different kinds.
And, yeah. The amendment, friendly amendment is?
And the friendly amendment is that we pursue potential partnership with, not just Sand Hill Properties, but other businesses or other.
Kirsten, can you edit it on the screen?
Yes, Mayor, I have that, oh, would you like me to add it?
Yes, please. And I would accept a friendly amendment. So pursue potential partnership with Sand Hill Properties and other developers? In the area, or, and other developers, would that be enough?
Yes.
Okay.
And other developers?
Okay. Okay, so, can you?
And, and maybe, can I add one thing? Maybe direct staff to come back to council so that the public gets an option to, gets an opportunity to look at this issue at, at every point of whatever progress.
So the motion does say instruct city staff to research and bring to the public and council the following. Would that be enough, or you want to add more details?
Regularly or maybe before making any major decisions. I wanted to convey the, the thinking that, you know, we're all in this together.
Yeah, okay.
City staff, the public, and us. And let's make sure that at every point of decision, the, the city staff, you know, brings back creative solutions that include all of us.
So perhaps that instruct city staff to research and bring back to the, bring to the public and city council the following for public and council input?
Okay.
Would that work?
That's good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I would accept the funding amendment with two points. One is to, you know, add to the last sentence before the one and two for public and council input. The second one is pursue potential partnership with Sand Hill Properties and other potential developers.
And if we, if we could underline the, the third line, while preserving access to publicly owned recreational facilities, including the sports center, if you want to put it in caps or emphasize it some other way, that would be good.
I think it's there, so I don't think we need to emphasize, sorry. Let's just, yeah, because if you're not changing words, I don't think we're making anything big. So this is a motion and a second, I'm open for discussion right now. So council member Chow, you have a light first, and council member Moore, you have a light second.
And I'd like to clarify, preserving access to sports center means we could still build mixed-use on sports center? It's just, it will be replaced by the whatever proposed project? So you are not excluding considering sports center, right?
I'm sorry, your question is?
Your, your, your language, preserving access to publicly owned recreation facilities, including sports center, does that mean we would still consider development of the existing sports center? What exactly do you mean by preserving access?
That means it would be accessible to the public as, as, that's what I meant. So do you want me to clarify it?
I think, I want to clarify, are we excluding sports center?
Can you add it if you want a friendly amendment?
No, I want to clarify what you mean by, are we excluding sports center from redevelopment? Wait, you are not.
Okay, so what I'm trying to do is make it very open and so that the staff have options. Okay, so preserving access to public-owned recreational facilities, including a lot of things. Could be Blackberry Farm, but since the sports center people are here, I really want to make sure.
Preserving means not touching them, or still?
Not touching the access to the sports center.
What do you mean not touching access?
So they can still use it, they can use it nonstop?
What, during construction?
Because I heard that you don't want even three days is, okay, so, yeah.
So can we, can, how about a friendly amendment to make it clear that
Sure.
we will not touch any of the existing recreational facilities, including sports center for redevelopment?
I would prefer, please, thank you.
Okay, can you repeat it?
Again, where are you going to put it?
So replacing the preserving access to publicly owned recreation, just while not, well, not consider any exists publicly owned recreation facilities, including sports center for redevelopment?
Okay, I think I have a better wording, if that's what, what you meant. If I say, "Direct staff to ensure conceptual development with viable financing strategies for the city hall, including new city hall and/or renovation of existing cities hall, while, without, without developments in any public-owned recreation facilities, including the sports center." Would that help you?
Yeah.
Okay, so, council member Froom, I think, council member Kitty first and council member Froom.
Where is that going there, after, after city hall? Without, it's going right here?
So I think what council member Chow would like to make the, you want to make a new motion or a friendly amendment?
Friendly amendment.
To, including new city hall and/or renovation of existing city hall, without developments to public-owned recreational facilities, including the sports center. Right, is that good with you? And that's a friendly amendment, you are, so what I would like to do is, I like to reserve accepting it, and I would open up a comment first. That means I'm not accepting it now, but I like to listen to council input first. So council member Moore, your hand is up first, followed by council member Froom.
And how much, I have five minutes, okay. So first I want to point out, the acreage, I couldn't locate in the, in the packet, so I had to calculate it. For the city hall complex, the, for the 30 to 120 dwelling units per acre, you'll end up with 189 to, I'm sorry, you'll end up with 99 to 396 units around here. That's sitting on 3.3 acres. For the sports center, 6.3 acres, the range is 30 to 120 dwelling units per acre. You would have 189 to 756 units at the sports center. I propose a substitute motion, because I didn't hear even a fractional amount of support for these items, to deny the recommended action and reaffirm the prior city council renovation and pursue the alternative à la carte options. And also, I think separately, we do need to consider bringing this item to a vote of the people, given the dollar amounts. And I want to, once again, show the à la carte items. This is from the staff report to the city hall subcommittee, which I served on. Okay, well, this, this slide's actually kind of interesting. We did look at the parking options in order to increase some parking and found some very economically reasonable alternatives. So the cost estimates, as I said before, city hall renovation seismic only. For a non-essential facility, that would mean you would need to move the emergency operations center over to the Torrey Avenue Annex. And that would have, the, the plan that we had in place was up for, I believe it was $4 million was allocated for it. It would have had a 1,300 square foot emergency operations center at that location. Alternatively, if you go to essential facility, which is basically to beef up the, the structural level, you'd be at $7.4 million. And then if you're going to do a complete removal of the interior and redesign, you would be at $27.5 million. So some of you might know, know this, the center of the existing city hall has the original council chambers sitting in it. So, and it's used by very few people because it is our emergency operations center. So oftentimes, there's just a handful of, of people using it. So if you move it to another facility, you then free up that entire center area, which provides room for growth. And plus, we've also had a projected decrease in city staffing because of this, the CDTFA audit. So their projection is that there'll be less, less need. And we're dropped down, I believe staff can correct me, to about 2015 staffing levels. Okay, thank you. I have made a substitute motion.
Can you repeat the substitute motion, please?
Okay, so the substitute motion is to deny the recommended action and reaffirm the prior city council renovation project direction and pursue alternatives from the à la carte options, which I just showed.
We have a substitute motion, and do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a substitute motion that's being moved and seconded, discussions?
I have questions still for staff, can I ask that?
Council member Froom, followed by council member Chow, please.
So for staff, with respect to the prior set of, as council member Moore described them, à la carte options, are any of those presently feasible, given our current budget situation?
We, we would, we would need to bring the entire CIP program to the council for reevaluation to see if there's projects the council would want to defund in order to, to, to fund the projects on the à la carte menu.
Council member Chow?
Okay, first of all, I think the staff mentioned last November that the city hall currently doesn't have any structural deficiency. And right now, it requires retrofit only because the standard has changed since we built it in 1960s, right?
That is not correct.
It's not correct? So they are identified, I mean, it's correct or?
It is not correct.
Could you clarify?
Yeah, there are multiple reports that show that this, that the seismic calculations that were done when the building was constructed were done improperly and that this building is seismically deficient.
Because it wasn't constructed correctly, okay, um, thank you. So I'd like to share the screen. So can you see my screen? It says, you know, this is, paragraph is from the seat, from the staff report. It says that with the rent level, they cast doubt on the viability of a potential project, even for private development market, when, where the interest is strong. And the staff report says, this is even without the added complexity of a municipal use. And with added municipal use to detract the bottom line, it's even less possible. And then I'm curious, the next paragraph is a staff recommendation from the staff report. Staff recommends the council provide direction to engage with one or more below-market rate housing developers to explore a conceptual project. We know below-market rate housing, even if you get funding, usually it doesn't even pay for the project itself. We, and it's very competitive to get the funding. So why are we considering only below-market rate housing developer when we know even a private market rate development is not even difficult? Plus, they have to pay for the municipal use of city hall or maybe sports center. So what's the rationale?
So the point of these paragraphs was to identify the reality that we face, but we also acknowledge that without exploring these options, we have no project, given our budget situation. So we didn't want to leave the council without, without options. We wanted to provide an option that we could pursue. And that's the reason for the recommendation as it stands.
So the staff actually thinks it's not able to pencil out if for a private developer to partner with the city, to build a city hall for us. However, staff wants to give council some option. But then that also means we will continue to spend money to pay consultant, to do more study, which 80% of the possibility is going to come back and say that's not viable. So what's the cost of this additional study?
So our, our recommendation does not include additional consultant time. Our recommendation would include, as outlined here, a conversation with one or more developers on potential partnerships that would work. And at that point, we, if, if it looks like something is viable, we would bring it back to council for their consideration and discussion. If we find that, that indeed the project doesn't pencil out, then we would bring that back to council for your deliberation and, and direction.
Then I still need more clarification on the density. Yeah, I couldn't find the acreage of either the sports center side or the city hall side. It's very surprising for a consultant to report on development possibility for these sites. So, so that they are proposing up to 120 units. And even with 60 units, that's still like 10 stories high? Is that a viable option the staff is proposing to pursue?
So there is no proposal on development density at this point. We identified in the report that there were multiple factors that were going to need to be explored, including the density of the project. And we highlighted that as being something that we needed to explore further to see if a density that is palatable to the city is something that would also pencil out financially.
Okay, um, thank you.
Point of, point of order, that's a good, good time check. I just wanted to point out that council member Chow is significantly over time. Council member Mohan, vice mayor Mohan and council member Moore have about a minute left. If, of course, it's at your discretion to extend time.
Do we have comments from council member? We have a substitute motion and a second, and this is where discussion about it. Do you have any comments on that, council member Moore?
Okay, I think as a matter of, I think council ethics, I personally have a problem with seeing a developer named in a motion to form an agreement with. And I'm just really, I'm really struggling with that suggestion in, in that motion. And I really have a problem with it. So land in Cupertino, it's $9 million an acre. So when we're talking about doing a ground lease on a project that's six acres, you know, that's $54 million worth of land use that you're going to be granting to a developer to go build something different. And then the amount of housing that would go into it on top, getting up to those numbers, the high end, 790, was that 796 units at the sports center? I didn't get a firm sense that the sports center was taken off the table. But let's move back over to our, our beautiful civic center that we have here. If you put those, that, those 390 units that would end up here for projects that don't pencil out, I'm just, I'm flabbergasted. Why, why are we looking at this? And the other part is that we don't have a clear financial picture from the CDTFA audit in kind of casual terms. We haven't waited for the dust to settle, to know how much we need to pay back, what's going to happen with any legal wrangling that's done? How long is that going to last? What's the final outcome? Do we need to make reductions in force? Are there other areas that, that we need to work on? And I think that this is a real knee-jerk reaction coming just one week after informing the public that we have a $56.5 million price tag. But there's even more that needs to be paid back as well, that hasn't been discussed yet. So when, when you're, if you own a house and you're trying to fix up one room and maybe you want to paint the walls, if, if someone came and said, "We're going to gut the whole place and redo everything."
I'm sorry, council member Moore, time is up, thank you very much.
This is just foolishness.
So do we have any other comments? If not, we can vote on the substitute motion. Although I would like to withdraw my first motion, but let's vote on the substitute motion first. So the substitute motion is as stated by council member Moore and seconded by council member Chow. Do we have any questions on that?
Can we look at the, can we look at the language?
Okay, yes, please, council member Moore.
Moore moved and Chow seconded a substitute motion to deny the recommended action and reaffirm the prior city council renovation and pursue the alternative à la carte options. And, and did you want to include bringing it to a vote of the people, or is that not part of it?
That would be, that would be separately, that we need to have a conversation about. When we go over a dollar amount, do we think it's appropriate for council to spend that much money? So to me, I think 15, 20 million, we're getting into the territory where it's the, the people's money. We can't just decide on that on our own. What you have here is, is correct, thank you.
All right, thank you, so, sorry about that.
If we're finished with discussion on substitute motion, let's vote by light.
The substitute motion fails with Chow and Moore voting yes.
So I am going to withdraw my original motion and make a sub, another new motion. The, the thing being, I'm hearing, I'm hearing what people are saying, what my council members are saying. And I would like to make it as open as I could to, for staff to research and bring us back and to the public and to the council, what options that's financially viable. We're going circle and circle around, what, what, what do we want to do with renovation? We don't even have $27 million to do a renovation. So we really need viable financing projects. So my motion, I just sent a new one to you, is simplify it again, again. It's direct staff to pursue conceptual development with viable financing strategies for the city hall, including new city hall and/or renovation of existing city hall. As vice mayor Mohan said, we're not excluding any possibilities who are excluding development to public-owned recreation facilities, including the sports center. I think that's the sentiment I got from council member Chow. Also instruct staff to research and bring to the public and city council the following, examples of successful public-private partnership projects for reference, so that we all learn together. Pursue partnerships, potential development partnerships. Not naming any, any developers, just pursue partnerships with potential development partnerships. So that's more open-minded, it doesn't, council member Moore is not comfortable with having Sand Hill there. So we, I'm putting out there, so this is my revised motion. And I'm hoping to get a second so we can discuss it. So if there is no second, then I'm looking for new motions.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so it's being moved and seconded. I'm open for two-minute discussion from each council, please. And I'm going to just start with my two minutes. I hope this is broad enough to satisfy the demand, you know, you guys are here, and also the council members' concerns and issues. And also give staff a broader, you know, And also give staff a broader, you know, scope to look for. I remember one of the speakers said creative financing. He or she, I forgot if he or she trusts our city managers and come up with creative financing to resolve the city council issue, city hall issues. We cannot, it, it would be ill intentioned for the city council and for our public to continue to have our staff and also public who goes into the city hall doing business daily to, to have this potential, you know, seismic problems on, on the city hall. So it's not because we want a good city hall for our staff. It really is our job, our obligation to provide a safe environment for the public and our staff to working. So this has to be resolved and financing is an issue right now. But how can we be creative? I like our staff to have more, more room to, to, to find creative solutions. And I hope we're all here to hear about it. I understand you care about a sports center and I hope you do care about our city hall too. And there's Memorial Park, there's Blackberry Farm Golf Course. There are plenty of things that our city can do together. I'm hoping that let's do it together. And I wanna say transparency is top on our agenda. So we are here because we have transparency. So I'm hoping that this satisfies of what you believe in. And please do continue to come back and keep us, you know, give us your most wise recommendations. We have great bright, you know, minds here in Cupertino. So, and I am for one that I think Cupertino is part of Silicon Valley. So if we have neighboring residents from Saratoga, from San Jose, from Fremont, I'm gonna tell you Mayor Lili May that you come to Cupertino. You're mostly welcome. So my time is up. I wasn't paying attention whose light was on first. We have four lights on right now. So let's start with my left. Council member Moore goes to Vice Mayor Mohan, council member Chow and council member Fruen.
Okay. I just want to mention we have a hundred and fifty million dollars in the Chandler account. We have over thirty million dollars in our checking account. All the accounts together, they're over two hundred and thirty million dollars. So I do question the assertion that we don't have the money. I think that that's a matter of where things have been committed and where they can be moved to cover these items. So I feel as though we're playing a game of smoke and mirrors. And we're being, we're being dragged into something that we're not interested in and that there is definitely a way to fund the, the twenty-seven million dollars. But someone is really hard pressed on this, this city hall getting torn down and rebuilt. And once again, I'm gonna mention that I'm very concerned about this, both the public-private partnership, but the number of units being suggested that are going to come in here. Because it's a, it's a three-acre parcel. And how it would get ultimately reconfigured is, we're, we're now gonna be subject to that. So I, I, I can't support the, the substitute motion. I would like to have it pulled up on the screen again so that we can see if it's clear that we have the sports center pulled off entirely. Cause it wasn't, it's not super clear to me that that is, has been taken off the table. So I want to see that in black and white, super clear, it's off the table, nothing's gonna touch it. Thank you.
Please, okay, can you show it Kirsten? Thank you. In time, I think we're gonna have council member Vice Mayor Mohan. Council member Chow, more, you still have a few seconds. Would you want to take, take advantage of it? No, okay, Vice Mayor Mohan, please.
Okay. So I'm, I'm looking at the new motion, Mayor Wei. I, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm okay with not indicating the name of a developer, Sand Hill Properties. We can just say any developer.
I'm sorry, that's not a new motion. I sent you a new one. A newer one. Sorry.
Can you see that? Thank you Kirsten.
Okay. Going back to the new motion. My only question here would be the language which says excluding development. I'm not sure what development means. Does that mean not renovating, not remodeling? We are sort of, if, if that's what it means, then we are sort of closing all options relating to improving recreational facilities, including the sports center. So I'm not sure if I'm misunderstanding the word development or if development.
I, I think that's exactly what I mean. While we're considering city hall, we're gonna exclude developments to public owned recreation facilities, including the sports center. So we are not gonna touch that.
So would we not want to renovate it if it's falling apart?
No, but only when we're developing city halls. If in ten years later, the sports center got needs renovation, that's another CIP project to consider. Only when we're find, find financing strategies for the city hall.
Okay.
You can read one language that's clearer. In time, I'm gonna go to council member Fruen. Oh, I'm sorry, council member Chow first. My mistake.
So I think I understand where the vice mayor is coming from here in, in that forestalling all opportunity to improve anything at the sports center is perhaps not necessarily the outcome that everyone would want. And we're here to make a decision in the best interest of the whole of the city. So what I would suggest based upon the feedback from the public so far is, is sort of the two things are coming out. One is that there is a desire to not have any interruption to access to all of the facilities that the sports center currently offers. I, not even ten days. We heard some, you know, really quite dramatic stories about even just not having it for one week. I, I can commiserate with that contrary to an assertion that was made by the member of the public. I, I do actually use my membership at the, the sports center. I think it's unfortunate that we don't have free weights there. That's a problem. But at any rate, I, I, I also heard a concern that was raised by, I believe it was Susan Woolrich. I'm sorry if I destroyed your last name. But there was a, a desire to ensure that we're not operating this municipal facility through a, a private entity. So I, I think that the language that could be used is to ensure, if you can bring the motion back up.
Kirsten, would you bring the motion back up?
It takes a second. There we go.
So that instead of saying while excluding development to publicly owned recreational facilities, that we would instead write the following, "While preserving continuous access to publicly owned rec, publicly owned and publicly operated recreational facilities, including the sports center."
Point, point of order. So the council members listened patiently while all of you spoke. This is their time to discuss the matter and deliberate and come to a decision.
Are you making a friendly amendment to the?
I'm, I'm offering it. It seems to be something that would satisfy the vice mayor's concern. And it would allow for a win-win if there are people who would like to see some improvement there.
So let me read it. "Including new city hall and or renovation of existing city hall, while preserving continuous access to public owned and public operated recreational facilities." Did I include in the sports center? Did I miss anything?
That, that's the language that I would offer if, if we want to satisfy those two concerns and still offer the opportunity of an improved sports center.
Yeah.
So would that be your friendly amendment? Does you second it?
If, if, if that is something that interests the vice mayor, she's, she's welcome to offer it as, as a friendly amendment.
Can you make the changes so we can look at it?
Can you repeat that, Mayor?
"Including new city hall and or renovation of existing city hall, while preserving continuous access to public owned and public operated recreational facilities, including the sports center." Does that sound right?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, let me do it.
Can you point, is this the correct location while preserving?
Yes.
Okay.
Continuous access to public owned and public operated recreational facilities, including the sports center.
To publicly owned?
Mm-hmm.
And?
And publicly, publicly operated recreational facilities, including the sports center. So I, I'd like to go to council member Chow first because I don't think that's a friendly amendment. It just says something on the table. Council member Chow?
I'd like to propose the substitute, substitute motion.
Just, just to, I, I'm, sorry, interrupt council member Chow. I just want to, was that, was that motion, that was that, that friendly amendment accepted or, or not? Just for the record.
I don't even think that's a friendly amendment. It's just a comment, right?
Okay. So there's, so there's been no, there's been no, there's been no change to the motion on the table.
The origin motion is still on the table.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Chow, your turn.
Okay. Oh wait, so Fruen's amendment wasn't accepted.
It wasn't a amendment, just a comment.
Okay. So I will share my screen. Here is my motion. Stop spending more staff time and money and to consultants to pursue options that would likely come at a significant cost to the city. Consider putting a council-sponsored ballot major in the 2024 general election to ask the voter approval. Sorry, that should be a K. Ask the voter approval of the renovation of the city hall project with up to twenty, forty million dollars, which is thirty-seven point five million with some contingency cost. That's a motion.
Okay, we have a motion. May I have a second, please?
Second.
It's being moved and seconded. One-minute discussion, please. We are going really late and Blackberry Farm people are waiting. So do we have a? And is to put anything on the ballot, we need to spend time and research. It's not so easy. When I was school district and Fremont Union High School district for eleven years, we put four bond measure possessive successfully. But we have to have consultant, we have to have potential, you know, voter. It is complicated. A motion like this cannot be decided on the fly.
Clarify, I'm not asking for a bond major. This is just asking the voter approval for the city to spend this dollars.
Then, then my question is where is the money?
Simpler.
My question is where is the money? So, so I have a lot of issues on this motion.
Clarify? The city got a thirty million dollars loan to build the library back in two thousand, two thousand. And then we did put a, a question on the ballot to ask the voters for approval for that project.
I, I do believe our director of public works has make it very clear that the potential of getting a bond because of financial situations is pretty minimal. So, okay, I'm gonna open up to other comments. I'm using too much time. I'm sorry. Councilman, Vice Mayor Mohan, one minute, please.
Just a quick comment about going, going to the ballot. I, I think that's, it may come to that, but I, I'm not sure today is the time to be discussing that. All we are doing today is exploring options, reasonable options that we can pursue. And the staff, and we're giving staff the authority to explore options. And, and so nothing is going to be decided today in terms of what comes down or what doesn't. And the other comment I wanted to make was about the timing. All the, any additional monies that we require for this project will be part of next year's budget. It is not part of this year's budget. So we'll have several opportunities to discuss the financial details of whatever project we embark on. So today, my understanding is that all we are doing is giving staff options or opportunities to pursue the various options that were laid out in the, in the motion.
Council member Fruen, one minute, please.
Yeah, I don't see the substitute motion as especially germane to the call of the question that we have before us today, so I will not be supporting it.
If that's, let's vote on the substitute motion by light, please.
Substitute motion fails with Chow and Moore voting yes.
So I'm going back to my original motion. I am going to stick with my origin, original motion. So, and thing is.
Pardon, the mayor, may we see it? May we see the language, please?
Yes. Sorry. I'm sorry Kirsten, do you still have my original one?
Your first motion, yes.
Yeah, the one that's.
The one that you withdrew?
No, the one that I, I made without the edit from council member Fruen. Cause he didn't make a substitute motion. He was just making a comment.
Okay, I will, please confirm this is the correct.
Thank you Kirsten.
Is that the correct motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Through the mayor, I believe I have a minute.
Okay. Yeah.
So I'm concerned about this being a three point three acre parcel. And that this is, it contemplates having a ground lease on it. The city hall actual footprint is very small, probably about twelve thousand square feet, I would think. And I would limit this development to only be within the footprint of the existing city hall or have an extension no more than ten feet in any direction because you can end up with something sprawling. So the, this suggestion that basically canceled out the previous council direction to have the twenty-seven million dollar renovation was to have an eighty thousand square foot city hall with a five hundred feet, five hundred seat event center, which would have added another three-story parking garage over here. So if you thought things were bad for the Regnar Creek Trail, wait till this comes through.
Thank you, council member Moore. I'm gonna take my one minute to rebut that because this is an open-minded, open motion that we're not excluding renovation of the existing city hall. We're not going back to the previous motion. This is a brand-new direction for our staff. So they have free research that bring back to every one of us for options that we can choose. This is not gonna be decided without public input. And this is not going back to the previous motion. This is a brand-new motion that represents what the council would like to give the staff a more latitude in doing research, bring back either a or not public-private projects for our reference or partnership with developers or use our own money if we can find them. So this is a brand-new, open-minded motion. So I'm hoping that the public understands we're not going back to the previous motions. Using my one minute already. So council member Moore, you use your one minute. I think we have Sheila Mohan, our vice mayor, or council member Fruen or council member Chow for your one minute on this motion. And then we're gonna vote.
Can you clarify? New city hall, do you mean the replacing the existing twenty-five hundred square foot city hall or forty thousand square foot or the eighty thousand square foot plus five hundred event space? So what's the scope?
The scope is what the staff is bringing back, including new city hall and or renovation of existing city hall.
Could be replacing community hall, library field, this, this all?
Actually not community hall. Commu, I, I would like to not start.
Not community hall, just the current, just the existing footprint of the existing city hall.
I would like to read it as is. "Including new city hall and or renovation of existing city hall." I think that's very clear of what the motion is about.
New means eighty thousand square foot?
I want to repeat again, this has, this is a brand-new motion and has nothing to do with our previous motions. This is a brand-new instruction for our city staff to do research.
So it's not bound by the eighty thousand square foot proposal? That's good. Thank you.
Any more, no more questions? I'd like to, okay, council member Mohan, Vice Mayor Mohan.
Excuse me, Mayor. I think council member Fruen proposed some changes which are not showing up here. Excuse me, Mayor, uh, I think, uh, Councilmember Fuin proposed some changes which are not showing up here. We read that, oh, we did not accept, okay.
So Councilmember Fuin, you have one minute.
I think that this, this motion is understandable, I think it's very clear. I do think it's unfortunate that it means that we can't consider, at least as part of this process, um, reasonable upgrades to facilities that we've got that I think could frankly use them. But I also understand the trepidation that people have about changing this particular use. Um, with respect to the existing footprint, I would also, uh, uh, oppose simply remaining within the footprint of the existing city hall, because I would at least like us to see, we've got a lot of parking space there, what else we can do with it. Um, and I would not be concerned about library field, if only because I think it's perfectly reasonable to expect that that should be considered a recreational facility.
So the motion stands as proposed, I'm, I think I, it's my motion, I made it, and Councilmember Fuin, um, seconded, and we are going to vote right now by light.
The motion carries with Chow and Moore voting no.
Thank you very much, this concludes this session, and we are going to move to item number eight. We have our Blackberry Farm people waiting patiently, thank you very much. Item number eight is Blackberry Farm Golf Course feasibility study, considering options to complete minimal repairs and improvements to the Blackberry Farm Golf Course, option one, or convert Blackberry Farm Golf Course to a natural habitat, option three. So I would appreciate, um, a little bit of silence, because, um, uh, we are going to move to number eight. We have, um, do we have a staff report? Uh, thank you for being here, um, could you quietly exit the, the room? Because we are moving on to number eight. Thank you very much, and I write, thank, I wanna thank you for the public comments who are on Blackberry Farm, who stayed so long with us, and it's ten eleven right now.
Thank you, Mayor Way, so we have the presentation available from Blackberry Farm. Um, if I can have the quietness in the room, thank you, thank you. So we have the presentation provided by the Public Works Director, Chad Mosley, accompanied by CIP Manager Susan Michaels. Thank you, Chad.
Good evening, I think I'm on here. Good evening, Council, Chad Mosley, Director of Public Works. Um, I have with me Susan Michael, the CIP Manager, and she will be presenting this item to you.
Good evening, Council, Susan Michael, CIP Manager. Um, one moment, I'm still transitioning. Thank you for your consideration tonight, we're coming to you with the Blackberry Farm Golf Course. We're trying to give an update on the feasibility studies that were completed. And this is a reminder of the subject and the recommended action for the item tonight. The, uh, for this item, the study to review the two reports requested by council in twenty twenty one. Oh, I'm jumping ahead, I'm sorry. Um, no, that's it. Um, looking to, we're looking at the costs and the benefits of the minimal repairs and the improvements to the Blackberry Farm Golf Course, which was option one. And then the other option what we were asked to consider was converting the Blackberry Farm Golf Course to a natural habitat, which was option three. There was an option two considered in twenty twenty one, but for this exercise, we were asked by council to concentrate on these two options only. The recommended action tonight is to direct staff to proceed with minimal repairs to maintain the Blackberry Farm Golf Course, which was option one. So, just a short agenda, um, is that the presentation will start with some background information, then we'll highlight some of the key points from the two reports and the public outreach, and conclude with some next steps and the staff recommendation. So the two reports are only referring to the item, the area in green, which was the Blackberry Farm Golf Course. There are, um, this area of Cupertino includes, um, the Stockham, it's Stevens Creek Corridor area, includes the Stockham Mall property, the Blush Residence, Stevens Creek Trail, the Blackberry Farm Park, and the McCollum Ranch Preserve. There are many recreo, rec, recreational features and natural habitats in this area, but the reports only considered the area of the golf course. So I just wanted to clarify that. And a little bit of background, uh, sometime before twenty twenty one, it became clear that the golf course's irrigation system was overdue for replacement. It is sixty, over sixty years old. And after, uh, being included on the city work program and being advised by the Parks and Recreation Commission, the council directed staff in July twenty twenty one to study the two options, minimal, minimal repairs and convert to natural habitat. Staff worked with outside consultants to complete the two reports and to do extensive public outreach. And so we are here tonight to go over a little bit of the reports. There, there were many attachments in your package, uh, so the reports were in there in full. So, in the, in the, looking at the minimal repairs to the golf course, the new irrigation system would include, um, would improve water use efficiency and allow for adjustments to meet water usage restrictions. A new system will also reduce costly repairs that keep coming up. Um, we would, the minimal repair scope also would includes replanting the ponds that are in the golf course area, the historic ponds with native planting and some kind of bio retention bio filtration system. Um, as part of the minimal repairs, it was, um, we, they included shortening one hole and adding netting between some of the holes in order to improve safety on the course. And it's just worth noting that the, the well that exists on the site would not be reinstated, re-instituted. It would have an initial cost of close to a million dollars and would have detrimental effects on the Stevens Creek, uh, by, uh, the impact of the flow. So ongoing testing and monitoring would also be substantial. So the total capital pros, cost, what we estimated back in twenty twenty two was just under two million dollars to do the irrigation, as noted here. And then over a twenty five year period, looking at the costs as well as the revenues, it would be an, an overall cost of over eight million dollars over that twenty five year period. So for comparison, um, on the convert to natural habitat reports, um, the, the consultants, uh, who were, um, actually impressive, uh, came to the conclusion that the area was originally an oak savanna. And, um, the conversion, if we were to go that route, would aim for that environment as well, an oak savanna. The plan would include new trails, seating, possibly education opportunities, and some recreation opportunities. Then, the native plantings would of course be dominant, but the area would also likely have the reemergence of other native plants and wildlife in the process of allowing the new natural habitat to reemerge. The establishment of the new plantings would require an irrigation system initially, but then eventually that would be removed after those plantings were established. So the total cost of the initial projects, the capital project would be under two million, just under two million. And then if you look at the, the cost and revenues considered over another twenty five year period, the overall cost would be just over ten million dollars in that twenty five year period. So the golf course has more revenue, um, than this, uh, option as, of course, so that offsets the costs. And the public outreach, it's worth noting that, um, as part of the Parks and Recreation System Master Plan work that was done, um, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, there was significant public outreach. And in that, uh, effort, the, the outreach indicated that eighty percent of the respondents noted that improving access to the natural open space is very or somewhat important. This compares with seventy four percent of the respondents who stated that a variety of recreational opportunities is very or somewhat important. The public outreach survey and outreach had done in twenty twenty two showed that fifty two percent of the respondents preferred option one, which was minimal repairs. However, when you analyze the responses of only Cupertino residents, fifty seven percent prefer option three, the convert to natural habitat. So when asked if respondents would use the site frequently or occasionally in the future, eighty seven percent of those who preferred the golf course said they'd use it frequently. Of those who preferred the natural habitat, ninety six percent indicated they'd use it frequently. So, um, I wanted to state that the next step, so if we decide to, we are given direction to move forward with a golf course, with the golf course, it's worth noting that we've identified some investigations to pursue. One of them is to tighten the scope of minimal repairs, to look into what is the actual minimal scope, what's an updated cost. Um, the other one were that there are some operational improvements that are possible that could improve revenue generation, uh, maybe we raise fees. Uh, there's other things that we can look at, but we do need to know that is a golf course before we come back to you with that investigation. And the third option that we wanted to, uh, mention, that's worth mentioning is there's perhaps other golf course enhancements, uh, that could improve the course and maybe even reduce the footprint. Um, it was a course that was developed a long time ago, and golf course designs have advanced quite a bit. Um, and fourthly, it is possible that we can explore lease options with outside vendors to reduce the costs and increase city revenues. Uh, we, it's possible that they could take on the capital project, and we would, uh, benefit, mutually benefit with the costs and the revenues. So it is also worth noting that if we, uh, are given this direction, it's possible that we can take this information that we would gather and hope to develop a new project proposal to bring to you with the next year's CIP program, proposal. So the recommendation is that, um, in summary, the costs of the two options are not remarkably different. Based on the community outreach, public opinion is relatively split on the choices of maintaining the golf course or restoring it to a natural habitat. Since the golf course has a strong history, many active supporters, it meets the goals and objectives of the Parks and Recreation System Master Plan, and the repairs will have a significant positive impact on the environmental concerns. Staff recommends that the golf course be retained, and that council directs staff to take steps required for option one, minimal repairs to the golf course. Thank you, I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Susan, we're opening up for the, um, council for questions. Uh, may I ask the procedural, um, council, um, City Manager, um, it's Jensen, um, sorry, it's late, late, I gotta say, I didn't go to bed until six AM today. So, ten, it's ten twenty three, do we need to, we just continue?
Uh, we can continue to eleven, if council wishes to, um, to continue beyond eleven, it will require a vote.
Thank you, so I'm open to five minutes each for council, um, questions for our staff. Thank you, Susan, for the presentation. If we don't see any council questions, Councilmember Moore?
Thank you for the presentation. I'm, I'm a little confused about this option one, minimal repairs, uh, with regards to the other suggestions, um, such as, uh, operational improvements. Uh, that's, that wouldn't be part of the option one minimal repairs, I'm assuming. That would be something that we would add on. Um, so you have operational improvements, other enhancements to improve the course and reduce the footprint, and the use of outside vendors. So, wha- what are you looking at with option one specifically? Is, it doesn't include those, does it?
Councilmember, thank you for your question. The minimal repairs was a scheme that, um, we were asked to do the reports on either minimal repairs or the habitat, and to not muddy the waters with everything in between. Uh, in our current fiscal situation, it probably makes sense to stick with the least amount of scope possible, so that is definitely high on our minds. Uh, we've also had many suggestions to look at other things that we can do to improve revenue and or improve playability, um, or increase partnerships or leases with other vendors, something like that. So, uh, in some ways, it, it suffice to say that we're, um, very clear on our fiscal responsibilities and situation, but we do recognize there are other things to keep in mind.
Um, thank you, and also through the mayor, is there, um, is, is there some way that more large canopy trees could be integrated in this? Because of it being a lower expense type of item, it's not reconfiguring anything. But is there some way that that, cause you mentioned the ponds. So, um, doing the minimal repairs, to me, just means the irrigation system, but you wanna do something with those ponds, and you mentioned naturalizing, um, that area. Is that, is it possible to have twenty trees planted, something like that?
Thank you for the question, I think we'd have to get back with you, I don't see why we couldn't do it, except for money and time and all of the other formalities.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Vice Mayor Mohan, please.
Thank you, Mayor. In the staff report, Susan, uh, in the, the discussion section, and maybe you had a slide on this, but, uh, the details of what you will actually do are laid out, right? A, B, C, and D. Um, I mean, just sort of responding to Councilmember Moore's question about increasing, um, the number of trees, uh, would that come under C to increase natural habitat areas where, where possible?
Yes, I, I think in some ways, um, the first priority is to improve the irrigation system and reduce the water usage, uh, that, in that realm. Um, our second, second level would be what, um, habitat or environmental improvements can we make to the golf course? Um, it's, it's work that will have to be looked at, yeah.
Thank you.
And are we ruling out, uh, uh, options where vendors will come and sort of change the, uh, character of the, uh, the preserve, or the golf course? Or, uh, is that something you could entertain or you would entertain?
Um, the short answer is, if we had a major proposal at Elk, it would definitely come back to council before we took it to a direction, in any direction. We would like to consider looking at other vent, outside vendors, and what they can bring to the table. Um, but we don't have that process laid out yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Susan, so I have just one quick question, so with option one, you would do more research and bring back to the council for consideration?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Have no questions, I'd like to bring up the, uh, public comment, please, oh, Councilmember Fuin?
And just for clarity as to what the call of the question is for us, it's essentially a binary choice of, do we proceed with a golf course without necessarily knowing all of the, the specifics of it, that's to be researched and brought back later, or do we go down the path of a natural habitat restoration? Is that accurate?
That is accurate, thank you.
Okay, and then do we know, just even ballpark, what the total operating cost and maintenance cost is of Blackberry Farm?
I do not have that at hand.
Um, Councilmember Chow?
Hi, I asked this question in the prep meeting, I'm wondering if you might have, um, the answer already, uh, about the auto bond certified golf course? That, um, do, did we, did you find out what's the requirement?
Uh, thank you for the question, uh, we, I did look into it, at least briefly, I looked up their website. And I, I don't know much more than that a certification does exist, and it's possible to get it. It does cost money, and we don't know, we'd have to weigh the pros and cons.
Okay.
But thank you for bringing that to our attention.
So, and, um, so if we consider, um, So, and so if we consider minimum amount of work that might reduce the amount of green space without, like maybe at the border, so replace the, with more natural planting, how costly would this kind of work be? Could we do that over time? Maybe every year we do a little bit?
That is a question that I'd have to ask the experts. I think it's a good question to say what would be the short term and long term possibilities, but I'm not prepared to address that.
Okay. I think, for example, in some of the parks, we have reduced the amount of green space at the border to reduce water use, so I'm wondering if that could still be done over time without impacting the golf usage.
Mayor, if I may, those are some of the operational items that we'd be looking into. And so at this point in time, we're focusing, there are ways for us to reduce some costs, but we're looking, do we want to go down the golf course? In which case, we'll look, we'll look further into those operational costs and ways to increase revenue. One of those, one of those items would be what you mentioned, yes.
And another question I asked is regarding, in case we have someone to help us operate the golf course, I think a question they had asked was whether they need to purchase the equipment or the city provides those equipment. So is the current equipment provided by the city or not?
Again, that would be part of a lease or agreement that was put into place if we found somebody. I'm not sure what special equipment there would be. We don't have a lot of equipment there. We have some golf carts.
With the current turf management contract, the equipment is provided by the city or the consultant company?
I believe the equipment is provided by the city.
Okay, thank you.
All right, if there are no more questions, let's bring to public comment. We are open for public comments. Kirsten, do we have cards?
Yes, mayor, we have, we have thirty-nine, or I'm sorry, thirteen cards, equalling thirty-nine minutes for community hall. And then we have, I see six hands raised on Zoom, which will bring us to about fifty-seven minutes. I probably added that one correctly, but an hour.
Thank you. So with our time that we need to do at eleven o'clock, may I ask the public comments to limit to two minutes, please? Thank you.
Okay, so first we have Shinpei, followed by Dave Villafonah, followed by Andy Garrido. Or is it Shinpei? Welcome.
Hi, so, okay, it's not evening. Well, all right. Hello, council members and staff. My name is Shinpei and today I'll be speaking behalf of the Cupertino Youth Climate Action Team on the Blackberry Farm. We support following through staff recommendation to proceed with minimal repairs to maintain golf course. So we strongly encourage the city to continue to find method to protect and preserve Steel Creek Corridor, plus minimize habitat disturbance near as much as possible. This includes not expanding to nighttime activities, preventing further development and prevention of intensification of the site and expansion of the site and more actions that is crucial to protecting habitats, wildlife, and the biodiversity near the course. We recognize the importance of course to community, but we also recognize that keeping course open will include environmental ramifications we must take responsibility for. Keep the golf course open, but ensure that open space is protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Dave Villafonah, followed by Andy Garrido, followed by Kathy Steiki. Welcome, Dave.
Thank you. Dear council members and community, I am Dave Villafonah, retired teacher of thirty-three years for the Cupertino Union School District. I have looked forward to joining the retired seniors who play at Blackberry Farm Golf Course and was able to formally join this group in 2020. They have been together for over thirty years. In that time, they have quite a few members who have enjoyed the camaraderie and exercise at this incredible site. There are only three nine-hole courses in the valley and to lose this one would be a tragedy. Blackberry Farm is frequented by players of all ages and abilities. I truly believe that during the COVID social distancing, the course saved lives. It allowed people to socialize safely and to get some welcome exercise. It would be a shame to lose this beautiful golf facility to a nature preserve, especially when Cupertino has quite a few nature preserves, but only one nine-hole course. I implore the council members to accommodate the community and keep Blackberry Farm as a golf course that is so well beloved by so many. Once you lose a course like this, you'll never get it back. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Next we have Andy, followed by Kathy Steiki and Pat Dowd.
I am Andy Garrido and I live in West San Jose, but I consider myself an honorary Cupertino. I've lived in this community for fifty-six years, I'm sorry, sixty-five years with my lovely wife who passed away last year. And my, some of my finest memories are the five or six years that we spent together playing golf at Blackberry Farm. In fact, when I was in the Army at Fort Benning, I asked my then fiancee, who lived in San Francisco, she was in the nursing program, the first nursing program at Chico State, three students, two teachers, and I asked her to find us an apartment in Cupertino because I was going to start teaching here. And she called me at Fort Benning and said, I couldn't find Cupertino. I said, well, tell me where you were. She said, well, I kept going past these four corners and there was a Cali feed mill. And she, and I said, that is Cupertino, because at the time, we, of course, were all orchards. I've worked for sixty-one years with the Cupertino School District and I've worked in all twenty-five of their schools. The camaraderie that I've developed with the people, the seniors that play at Blackberry Farm, and I won't call us golfers, I'm a hacker. And the idea of planting more trees disturbs me because I had enough trees as it is, but it is a community resource and I see people of all ages, all ethnicities, all having a good time getting along. And I think it would be a sad day if we lose this golf course and I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Next we have Kathy Steiki, followed by Pat Dowd, followed by Emily Poon. Welcome, Kathy.
Good evening again, Mayor Wei, Vice Mayor Mohan, and City Council. I am a golfer and I play, I play the golf course frequently. We'll have no problem getting an Audubon certification because when I'm out there, I see hawks, there's the western bluebird, there's a lot of ground birds, there's woodpeckers. We'd have no problem getting that certification. But I think the golf course is an ideal place for family golfing. When I'm out playing, I see parents with the children, sometimes dad is with a couple of the children, sometimes mom. Lots of seniors are all over the golf course. And I think it's a great, that's a great challenge for them. It's an easy course for them. Now, we do have Deep Cliff and I've heard the city council speak to that before, asking if they could contact Deep Cliff for senior membership. Well, they allow seniors and they have senior rates at Deep Cliff. However, it's not that enjoyable for older folks because it's steep in some areas. It's a very rugged course to really play golf on for seniors. But when I watch them at Blackberry Farm, they buzz right through, visit with each other. You'll see people stopping at the tees to have conversations with each other. It's a very leisurely golf course and I certainly hope that you will see fit to exercise option one. Keep our golf course. I feel very much like the people from the, from the Sports Center. We need the exercise. We're anxious, we're just as anxious as they are. Please keep our golf course. We'll never get it back again if you give it up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. Next we have Pat Dowd, followed by Emily Poon, followed by Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Pat.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Pat Dowd and I'm here tonight to urge you to pick option one and keep our golf course. I think that the city has an excellent Parks and Recreation Program and the golf course is a very important part of that program and provides a real need for the community. Thank you very much and I hope we get your support tonight for the golf course. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Next we have Emily Poon, followed by Rhoda Frye, followed by Keith Kraft. Welcome, Emily.
Greetings. My name is Emily Poon and I am a sixteen-year resident. The pandemic brought a lot of new golfers to all golf courses. Blackberry is a beloved nine-hole golf course. The need for a short course with nine holes is increasing. It is easier to fit into busy schedules. A twenty-year golfer told me she finished a round of golf by herself in forty-five minutes. There is no reason to ask a golf course to change to nature trails when there are plentiful nature trails already. Variety is the spice of life. We should have both golf courses and nature trails. The course is friendly to wildlife, as Chuck Hender has shown with his collection of wildlife photos. How wonderful that Blackberry has its own dedicated photographer. Our golf course in Cupertino is actually connected to the great golf teacher, Lucius Bateman, through his student, Gary Plato. If young Gary had not taken lessons from Lucius in-
Excuse me, point of order, does your photo is now shown on the, for the Zoom meeting? Oh, now it is, thank you.
Can you see it? Can you take out the time because I'm being interrupted?
Video, pause the time for five seconds, please, if that's okay, mayor.
I have to collect my thoughts, you know? The interruption is not just that interruption. Thank you. Our golf course in Cupertino is actually connected to the great golf teacher, Lucius Bateman, through his student, Gary Plato. If young Gary had not taken lessons from Lucius in the nineteen-fifties, we might not have this golf course. Why? Gary is the relative of the owner of Blackberry Farm Orchard and the idea of building a golf course came from him. The golf course was completed in nineteen sixty-two and Gary went on to become a professional golfer and teacher. I hope that twenty twenty-three is the year for the rebirth of the golf course, for it to be saved and improved. Golf courses are the best outdoor classrooms. Gary Plato and his classmates, all seniors now, have honored their beloved teacher by forming the nonprofit Lucius Bateman Foundation to teach golf and lifelong values to young people. Lucius had turned young lives around. He not only got disadvantaged kids started in golf, but he also kept them out of trouble.
That is your time. It's-
I'm not sure that that is accurate. I really-
So you're muted now?
Give your twenty seconds more. Twenty seconds more, please.
Yes. He not only got disadvantaged kids started in golf, but he also kept them out of trouble and he didn't charge them anything. Exactly a month ago, the inaugural tournament to raise funds took place in the golf course in Alameda. Please look up Lucius Bateman and the remarkable story of how he taught his students, called the Bateman Boys, many of them having become golf champions. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Next we have Rhoda Frye, followed by Keith Kraft, followed by Len Dumas.
So just, sorry, Rhoda, just a sec. Just a reminder that our council rules encourage members of the public as well as council members to behave civilly when participating in the meetings. Thank you.
I concur with previous speakers. As you know, there's a new store in Cupertino that sells golf stuff, so golf is by definition on the upswing. As you already have heard many times, that the survey was terribly skewed toward the habitat option. I want to go over a little bit of the history. Around two thousand, the city published a mitigated negative declaration in which the watering system at Blackberry Farm would be replaced. We're looking at over twenty years. It also stipulated there'd be no nighttime lighting because it's adjacent to Wildlife Corridor. The ponds and naturalized bird habitat vanished after the creek work and around that time, the golf course also switched from on-site well water to watering with expensive San Jose water. Since around two thousand, as outlined in staff report, there have been various reimaginings of the golf course for other uses. In fact, I asked Miss Steiki how many times she had been here to defend the golf course. I'm certainly sure it's more times than she can count as it is mine. We've come full circle, keep the golf course. If we added up the cost of all those useless studies, how much of that water system could we have already paid for? One thing that the public has been unanimous about is having the golf course be a low-key amenity, that general area, either nature, habitat, or golf. So I don't play golf and I don't belong to the Sports Center, but I believe that both are important amenities to our city. Yet, the staff report suggests further study, which is not part of the council direction regarding A, B, C, and D. Minimal cost repairs, yes. Operational improvements, just raise the fees by buck and call it a day. Golf course enhancements, to improve the golf course and perhaps reduce the footprint? No. Explore lease options and vendors and make it more expensive? No. Stop the endless studies, repair the watering system. Please also consider reducing irrigation in non-essential golf areas. Save water, increase natural habitat, as being done in golf courses. We don't need enhancements that would reduce the charm and increase costs. Thank you.
Okay. Next is Keith Kraft, followed by Len Dumas, followed by Emmy Moore Minish.
Good evening, Mayor Hung Wei, City Council members. I'm a thirty-seven-year resident of Cupertino and I've spoken here many times before. I work in the golf industry. I'm pleased with the recommendations and I hope you vote to approve that here today. I hope the recommendations weren't made just for financial reasons. The golf course is more than just looking at the bottom line, although I think we could make that golf course more profitable by raising rates and things. I'm, I don't, we wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the water situation. So all irrigation systems break, they need fixing. If your irrigation system, if you're, something fails at your house, you don't sell your house, you fix it, right? There's twenty-six hundred municipal golf courses in the United States with a lot less money than Cupertino has and they're making it work. There's no reason why we can't make this golf course work. Regarding improvements, I don't think we need to have any netting between any of the holes. You've got trees there. I played many golf courses, I've never seen any netting between holes. At the boundaries, protect cars at parking lots, but not between the holes. That's why God invented the word four. And you can leave the pond the way it is. You don't have to fill it up. I played there when they had cattails in there. Bottom line is a lot of golf courses are filling in sand traps to make the play faster. So just leave it as a, put some monarch, what do they have, what is that, monarchs one? Milkweed, plant some milkweed there. I'm done, thanks. Oh, Audubon, by the way.
That is your time. You're muted, sir. Next we have Len Dumas, followed by Emmy Moore Minish, followed by Jean Beduard. Welcome, Len.
Thank you, thank you. Mayor Wei, council members and staff, thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. My name is Len Dumas. I serve as the Executive Director for the Northern California Section of the PGA of America and we represent over a thousand golf professionals and four hundred facilities throughout Northern California section, of which Blackberry Farm has been, is included in that since its opening in nineteen sixty-two, employing PGA professionals since nineteen eighty-six. As a matter of fact, recently, these past couple of years, we've inducted both Mr. Bateman and Mr. Plato into our Northern California Section PGA Hall of Fame. Golf courses represent and serve communities in ways like no other. A place for families, neighborhood residents who grew up in the area have been playing together for decades, juniors now discovering the game and playing with their parents, siblings, grandparents, and even great-grandparents. A golf course itself serves as a filter and buffer system, reduces erosion, managing stormwater runoff, and serves as a habitat and sanctuary for many plants and wildlife. It is not mutually, it's not exclusive at all with the natural living habitat. Well before COVID, golf courses replaced manicured turf with drought-resistant plants and non-turf areas and continue to do so in respect of the environment. COVID brought golf to the forefront of the activity and this game has since been enhanced by the diverse, multi-generational that have started playing or resumed playing with opportunities for all. for all. The golf courses reopened due to their outdoor nature promoting health. Exercise and wellness and programs include family golf, junior golf, and even serving as rebuilt of nature for our veterans through this great game. We are grateful for staff's recommendation, supporting repairs, and through, as a representative of the Northern California Section, offer our support to the city, city council, and all those involved to commute and improve this great community asset. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Emmy Moore Minish, followed by Jean Bedord, followed by Will Johnson. Welcome, Emmy.
Good evening. I'm Emmy Moore Minister. Thank you, Honorable Mayor Way and City Council, for this opportunity to speak this evening. And I am here in concurrence with the staff recommendation, supporting agenda, this Agenda Item Number Eight, to retain Blackberry Farm Golf Course. I am not a resident of Cupertino, but I am neighboring city of Santa Clara and grew up cutting cots in Cupertino as a kid and playing the golf course, and so my good memories come from the early days of Blackberry Farm. I am also co-founder of the California Alliance for Golf, an organization that brings all the golf organizations in California together to support golf facilities and to help retain them, and also to support those three million golfers in the state of California that play this game. Also, I wear the hat as the founder of Doctor's Orders Play Golf, a public health initiative that encourages people to play the game for wellness purposes. Studies show that if you play it regularly, and that doesn't mean you have to keep score, but if you get out there regularly, you can extend your life by five to seven years. So I look at Blackberry Farm also as a wellness center. It's a healthy environment. And speaking of environment, the environment sustainability is important to you, to your community, and also to us in the golf industry. So I really encourage staff to continue working with or reaching out to the Autobahn International Certification Program to learn about it. That program is all about sustainability. It's about protecting habitat. It's about educational opportunities that focus on the environment, and I'm sure there'll be some walking tours in there, too. So we all know it costs money to maintain a course, and the one thing I've learned in my twenty-five years in this golf business, sitting through a lot of seminars, is that the improvements continue for irrigation and the technology. So I know there'll be some savings of water as you have this chance to move forward. So green fees, I would suggest maintaining a favorable rate for, a green fee for your residents, and for those of us outside, increase it.
That is your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jean Bedord, followed by Will Johnson, followed by Rich Parker. And our final speaker will be Claudio Bono. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening, council. My name is Jean Bedord, and I am a resident of Cupertino, and I'm not a golfer at the moment. I once, I played once upon a time, but do not, no longer play. I have to say that this is a much more civilized community right now. I'm here to support the staff recommendation to retain the golf course, making minimal repairs. The alternative of the conversion to open space makes no sense. McClellan Ranch already has eighteen acres of open space, plus there are many county parks which are nearby. In contrast, we have one and only one golf course. It's an important recreational facility for youth and seniors. It's only nine holes, which can be played in a couple of hours, although there are those who play it even faster. An eighteen-hole golf course like Deep Cliff requires several hours to play. Kids and seniors aren't really welcome because they slow down play. So it's important that we retain this facility. I also recommend that the Parks and Recreation Department convene an advisory group consisting of many of the experts that you have heard tonight, who have golf industry expertise and who are golfers themselves, to advise on the type of features that need to be there. And, you know, and what's more, they're not going to charge you anything. They're not, you know, they're not, wouldn't charge you consulting fees. So I think this could be a very valuable resource as we move ahead and try to do cost-effective improvements. In short, please approve moving ahead with the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Jean. That is your time. Next, we have Will Johnson, followed by Rich Parker, followed by Claudio Bono. Welcome, Will. And you have slides.
Just let me know whenever you have them ready.
Okay. It should, you should see it now. That's your first-
Thanks so much. I'm Will Johnson. I've been a passionate golfer my whole life, but I've always been troubled by a few things. It has a very intimidating atmosphere. Affordable courses really struggle, and of course, it's not very sustainable in terms of its water consumption. So when I learned about Blackberry Farm Golf Course in my own backyard, facing closure over these exact issues, and seeing a near fifty-fifty split amongst residents on how to proceed, I took it upon myself to come up with some ideas to address the motivations on both sides by reimagining the course as the intersection of golf and park. And I came up with a concept called "The Backyard," slide please, at Blackberry Farm. And I'm not here today to pitch a business, but rather to spark ideas for what's possible. Slide, please. This concept could reshape the nine holes into two six-hole, one-hour experiences designed to challenge beginners, sorry, challenge the current golfer while providing an approachable introduction to beginners, doing for golf what pickleball has done for tennis. It can be radically sustainable, doubling capacity on course while reducing water intake. We free up nearly three acres' worth of land to create a versatile and family-friendly park at the entrance of the property there with truly endless options, from a monarch butterfly garden to a dog park, pickleball courts with a natural noise blanket, an open field for family movie nights, farmers' markets, et cetera. The whole concept could be enhanced by a welcoming outdoor food and beverage garden, or even simple food trucks, offering an eclectic mix of cuisine at an affordable price in a one-of-a-kind atmosphere. Above all, I encourage us all to consider that in the heart of Silicon Valley, with a gem like Blackberry Farm Golf Course, we should be pursuing something that is more than golf or park, but could be an inspiration for municipal concepts everywhere. The backyard or any concept like it does more than commit to one thing. It could transform Blackberry Farm into a beloved community hub or the true backyard of Cupertino.
Thank you. Well, that is your time.
Thanks.
Okay. And our next two speakers will be Rich Parker and Claudio Bono.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Rich Parker. Moved my family here in nineteen seventy-nine to Flintshire Street, and we liked it then. We like it now. The people that decided originally in nineteen sixty-two to put this golf course in were looking forward, and I think we're looking forward, too. The survey that, I didn't see the results before tonight. That was, that was great. Fifty-two percent were interested in golf. Fifty-seven percent were interested in natural space. That's a hundred and nine percent. So I don't know where the nine percent came from, but listening to the people tonight, you haven't heard many of the fifty-seven percent. And I think that my, my own personal history, when we moved here, my son was, what was it? My wife won't remember, like, five or six, but we played when he was younger. He started there. He plays much better now. He's in his fifties. I used to beat him. He does, doesn't work that way anymore. So I recommend the council vote for Option One. I would really love to see a uniform vote positive for Option One. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Claudio Bono. Welcome, Claudio.
Mayor Way.
Claudio, can you wait for a little while? I would need the council approval to go ahead and extend it to eleven-thirty. I will make that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
So let's be move a second. Let's vote by light.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Good evening, Mayor Way, city council, ladies and staff. I was the first speaker. I'm glad to be the last one. So basically, I just wanted to add what is not on the staff report, and I appreciate what, all the help that has been done. But the Blackberry Farm has been a very contentious talk, but if we're, I'm going to deduct the two percent, so we'll make it fifty-five, so we have a total of close to a hundred. If you actually talk to the resident that were for the natural habitat, the conversation also that is not here and/or on the report was, if we do have in-house people that decide to put an encampment in this natural habitat, we would have a big problem. No, Claudio Bono here does not have any problem with the in-house. It's a very big conversation to be had, and that's something that I have deep in my heart because I, as a successful businessperson, I do have a response and actually a plan for the in-house, and I'm gonna, and I'm gonna go as high as possible to provide that idea, which should work. So I'm here to basically also confirm that this was a feasibility study. No one, we're not here to talk about the removal of the Blackberry Farm, so I think that this is a misconception right there. And so, once again, I'm here to support, support the staff recommendation and move to Option One. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudio. And now we will move to our speaking, people requesting to speak on Zoom. We have six hands raised. Nancy Salin, Dashal Leeds, and Shawnee Kleinhaus. Welcome, Nancy.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Honorable council members, my name is Nancy Salin. I'm here to ask you to keep Blackberry Farm Golf Course alive and well. I was a member and chair of the Architectural Site and Control Committee during the nineteen-seventy decade. My young son learned to play golf at Blackberry. I, today, play with my senior friends regularly at Blackberry. Why should you keep it? Number one, it's a nine-hole, short-course treasure. Number two, it's a healthy sports activity and a resource for all ages. How marvelous that you can see a grandparent and a grandchild playing together for an hour or so. Number three, there's going to be a lot more folks living in Cupertino as the housing element has been increased dramatically. How lovely will folks moving into Cupertino find that they have a marvelous nine-hole golf course right nearby? Number four, business folks like that they can fit nine holes of golf and a great lunch at Blueberry, not Blueberry, but at the Blue Pheasant, and still have an all-afternoon to work. And with COVID, work has changed dramatically, so, and golf has, has come much more highly to the fore. I encourage you to celebrate and to keep this Cupertino landmark. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy. Next, we have Dashal Leeds, followed by Shawnee Kleinhaus, followed by San Ar. Welcome, Dashal.
Hello, my name is Dashal Leeds. I'm the Conservation Coordinator for the Sierra Club Loma Prieta Chapter. I'd like to speak in support of Shinpei and the other public commenters before me, who have expressed their enjoyment of the habitat and accessibility of Blackberry Farm. Cupertino is poised to move forward with Option One, necessary repairs and minor improvements. If you do so, we hope that you include in your motion three small but important provisions that will protect nature on the site. Number one, include a requirement that operations shall not be extended after the current closing time of Blackberry Farm Golf Course, which is six-thirty PM. Evening and nighttime are critically important to wildlife. Animals need the space to move around without interference from artificial light at night, noise, and people. Ensuring that operations will not expand into the evening hours will help protect the vulnerable and necessary habitat of Stevens Creek. Number two is include direction to staff that there will be no future discussions of intensifying the activities on the site. Intensification brings more light at night, more human activity, more noise, and potentially more infrastructure that can encroach on the creek corridor. And number three, do not open the door to future discussions of leasing the site, retain city ownership. As survey results have indicated, people like Blackberry Farm because it is more affordable than other golf courses. And among survey results from Cupertino residents, more of half of them preferred Option B, return to nature. So we ask of you, do not betray the trust of the community. Keep city ownership. Keep this golf course affordable. Protect nature within Blackberry Farm. Thank you.
Thank you, Dashal. Next, we have Shawnee Kleinhaus, followed by San Ar, followed by Nick Bailey. Welcome, Shawnee. And there you go.
Good evening, Mayor Way and council members. I'm Shawnee Kleinhaus, the environmental advocate for Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society. More than four thousand people responding to, responded to survey on the future of the golf course. This level of participation is unheard of. Survey results consistent with responses to other surveys during the Park Master Plan highlight how much Cupertino residents love and respect nature, wildlife, and the tranquility along Stevens Creek Corridor. Audubon and fifty-seven percent of Cupertino residents supported return to nature. But if you choose to, you, to keep the golf course as recommended by staff, please recognize that the common ground, both golf and nature fans, appreciate the unique qualities of the repair and corridor, and keep the repairs absolutely minimal. We believe that bookends are needed tonight to ensure that the integrity of the Stevens Creek Repair and Corridor is not eroded in the future in additional surveys, studies, and other types of work in processes. So please focus on passive, inexpensive, family- and nature-oriented recreation on the golf course and its surrounding, and keep it under city control. So I'll repeat what Dashal Leeds from the Sierra Club asked for. Any operations on the golf course in play should not extend after current closing time of Blackberry Farm. No intensification of activities on the site, especially if those might require additional parking, or increase in lighting, or noise, or other type of interference with wildlife movement and living on site. A couple of comments regarding proposed repairs. We're concerned with the addition of netting in several places. The netting is unsightly, potentially hazardous to birds, and-
Thank you, Shawnee. That is your time. Next, we have San Ar, followed by Nick Bailey, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, San.
Good evening, council. I'd like to voice my support for the staff recommendation to keep Blackberry Farm Golf Course as is, and to reject the proposal for natural habitat. I'd like to also request the council to not accept any further studies on this site. We have spent enough taxpayer money on studies. It is time to end these studies and keep our projects that are study projects to the bare minimum. The, the golf course is a habitat unto itself. It is peaceful and serene. I spend a lot of time just watching the green. It's a great place to take meetings. I highly recommend it. Someone's on a call, you don't have to take it from home all the time. Park in the Blackberry Farm Golf Course, gaze at the greens, and take your call, and it is an amazing, de-stressing experience. Highly recommend it. I hope to see some of you there next time around. I would like to see upgrades to the Blue Pheasant. I think the Blue Pheasant is underserved. I would also like to see upgrades to awareness building amongst the schools. I would like to see school programs at the golf, at the golf course, similar to how the Sports Center has it. And while I have time here, I want to say the Sports Center was, was disappointed, the supporters of the Sports Center were disappointed to not see their, their, their fellow sports lovers, the golf patrons that were in the auditorium not speaking up for the Sports Center. Let it be said for the record that, speaking on behalf of the Sports Center supporters, that I have consistently spoken on behalf of retaining the Blackberry Farm Golf Course. I'm doing that today, and I will continue to do that in the future. And I also spoke in support of retaining the Memorial Park softball fields and helped them organize as well. And so, let it be known for the record that we believe that sports build unique bonds across people of all races and all parts of society, and it is to be cherished. Thank you.
Thank you, San. Next, we have Nick Bailey, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Nick.
Yes, thank you. As a former Cupertino resident and a Blackberry Farm customer, I'm in support of the staff recommendation, and thank you all, thank you to the council and everyone for their hard work on this. As a longtime PGA member and general manager of a neighboring golf course, I appreciate your continued support in growing the game that so many of us love. My first round of golf ever was at Blackberry Farms and many thereafter, and I would not be where I am today without having access to that golf course facility. I now enjoy rounds of golf at Blackberry Farms with my two sons for five dollars as part of the Youth on Course program. And with likely over a million rounds of golf played at Blackberry Farms over the sixty-year history, it's played an important role for juniors, seniors, and all golfers along the way. Golf has never been more popular, and I hope to continue to play there for decades to come. Thank you for the time and keeping me up tonight.
Thank, thank you, Nick. And our final speaker, they had their hand- And our final speaker that had their hand raised within the nine minutes of the mayor announcing the item is Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. So it'll come as no surprise that I support staff recommendation. And a little pause on item D of the list of recommended direction. I do not believe there needs to be any looking into leasing the golf course. And on top of that, I wholeheartedly do not believe that any, any connection with Oasis Golf should be considered. That's not what we're talking about. The avid and longtime golfers all have said, keep it simple. I believe that the nets, before Shawnee said so, it worried me that unwanted nets do and can, or can and do interfere with birds and other wildlife. If they're not necessary, don't do it. Keep it simple. And while I appreciate an effort from the community member to have some new input on this, I'm not in favor at all for this golf course to be changed to two, six holes and something more of a, what was called beloved hub. It already is a beloved hub. You've been hearing it for over, for years that it's a beloved hub the way it is. So keep it simple, keep it cost-effective, and please respect Dashal Leeds and Shawnee's comments to not have activity going on there too late at night for all the reasons they stated. I think all of that together is a good package. But again, item D, I would, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I want to thank all the comments because some of you stayed really late. So thank you for staying with the council. I'm bringing back this council for discussion. We have up to 11:30, so I'm hoping we can keep this short. But I'm not going to limit you to two minutes. But I would hope that our council members keep that in mind, that we would like to really make a decision pretty fast. So may I have a motion and a second so that we can start the discussion? So who?
I have a motion ready.
Councilmember Chow is gonna make a motion, please.
So I make, I'd make the motion to move the staff recommendation. And in addition, to prioritize item B, evaluate operational and fee rate changes that may improve revenue since it's been overdue for many years and bring a simpler fee schedule update to the council as soon as possible.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Can you leave your motion on the, on the desk so we can look at it? Thank you. Do we have a second?
Can councilmember Chow repeat the?
Yeah, she put it back on the.
Down the screen.
Can you enlarge it a little bit? Challenging to the eyes. Thank you. So if we don't have a second, we can, you know, open up for another motion.
So I'll second it with the provisor that will discuss the matter.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. I'm gonna open up for discussion. Councilmember Moore, please.
I'd actually like to hear from the other council members if we want to leave D still on there, explore the potential of leasing the golf course to an outside vendor. Or is that something we're not interested in having staff pursue? Because there's, I can understand the reason why you might want to keep it in-house. Perhaps it could, the fees could be cheaper. So I'd like to understand if that's true or not. Maybe someone from, from staff could weigh in on that. What, what would be the pros and cons of leasing the, the course from a cost standpoint for a golfer?
Counsel, I'd be happy to weigh in on that briefly. We were leaving that option open because there may be possibilities for the city to enhance its revenue for the golf course. Any sort of lease that we were able to discuss would come to council for your review and approval, obviously. We don't, I think it's important to leave that on the table so that those options can be talked about and we can talk about them openly. There may be an option that is, is good for the city. With respect to the cost of the golfers, you know, that would be up to the, the business, right? They, they would want to make sure that they're keeping the, the golfers coming in, but they also want to make a profit. And so that could result in an increase in costs. But that would be something that would be discussed when the lease, if, if, if a lease ever came in.
Thank you. And also through the mayor, so my, my concern and if, if no one else wants to remove item D, my concern there is from listening to the people who are enjoying the course so much that it's, they have, there's family experiences. And if you start, go to raising the fees too high, it's going to become the, the sport of the, the very rich and, and people will be basically priced out. So I would just, if, if we want to allow that to move forward, just, we need to be very careful about it, that we don't alienate individuals by raising the prices too high.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Do we have any other discussions? Councilmember Chow?
Yeah, I think, I thought the option D with outside consultant in may or may not increase fees. It's, I think I understand that some golf course operator, they just operate. And then might help improve the utilization of the golf course in good attendance. So it's something I'm willing to look at. Of course, with the understanding that we might not. But then actually I had, I made my motion. I had two other amendments that I would like the council to consider that I've shared. I, the first amendment I would like to make is the memo saying says, first, a simpler fee structure. Second, I hope to bring, get more information about the Audubon certification what's involved and how much would be the cost. And, but then further, in one or two years, I would like to consider a proposal for fee restructuring to consider deeper discount count for Cupertino residents and deeper discounts for youth, 18 years or younger, and/or fee waiver for younger youth and deeper, and discounts for low-income residents and public agency employees. This is with the intention to increase golf course usage. And that will hopefully drive up revenue also. So that's the first amendment that I would like the council to consider. Do I have a second?
Through the mayor.
I, I'm sorry, who's?
Sorry, Susan.
Oh, so sorry, Susan. Go ahead.
If I may return back to the original summary, we actually need a clear direction from the council on golf course or habitat and need to keep it at the high level. And I believe while there's some useful questions there, we do need the direction on the golf course first, and we can come back with other details later.
Thank you, Susan. And so, Councilmember Fruin, I think you have your light up first.
So I would just echo what Director Michael had to mention, which is simply that, you know, we want to keep this at high level so that there's clear focus on a specific direction and not creep beyond that too far. The one thing I, I would offer though, because I noticed that you wanted to be able, Councilmember Chow, add some recognition of, of some requests from the Sierra Club and Audubon Society that we could add to it a section E, focus plans on outdoor uses, on daytime use in order to avoid significant evening light impacts and noise impacts, and that may satisfy that need.
Okay.
Just to, excuse me, mayor. Just, just to clarify, Councilmember Fruin, are you accepting?
I am not accepting.
The friendly amendment, okay. Just, just wanted to make sure that was covered in the record.
Thank you. So the friendly amendment is not accepted.
Amendment?
Yes, I'm proposing an amendment.
I accept that and I hope to write it down.
I have it written down. I'll send it to the clerk.
Okay.
Okay, so that's in, we have a motion and seconded and also with a friendly amendment that's being accepted. So are we ready to vote?
Mayor.
Yes, you have another two, two minutes.
Would Councilmember Fruin entertain the certification for Audubon certification? Bring more information on that.
That would be fine.
Can, can we see the motion, please?
Uh, okay, so. I'm sorry, I got mixed up. So I have Fruin's amendment to Chow's amendments.
So if I understand, Chow's amendment is not being accepted.
Oh, okay.
So it's the original plus Fruin's amendment.
Yeah, so Chow, so this was Chow's original motion, staff recommendation to direct, to proceed with minimal repairs to maintain the Blackberry Farm Golf Course with the addition to prioritize B, evaluate operational and fee rate changes that may improve revenue generation and cost recovery. Fees, Fruin seconded with the provisor that it would be discussed further. And then Chow made the following amendments, which Fruin declined and made a separate friendly amendment to add a section E to focus plans on outdoor uses, on daytime use in order to avoid significant evening light impacts and noise impacts. And then this is, and then Councilmember Chow added sponsorship for Audubon and Sierra Club, I believe, which Fruin accepted.
Another sponsorship, Audubon certification.
Oh.
Bring information on Audubon certification of golf course to the council.
Was that in, oh, right here. Bring more information on Audubon certification to the council. So just this one bullet point. And Fruin accepted that.
Okay.
If I could make another amendment.
It's the mayor's discretion, not mine.
So another one, it's the last bullet in my second amendment. No future discussion of leasing, selling, or intensifying the site. Retain the city ownership.
Councilmember Fruin, I believe that's a friendly amendment.
I, I think that that's incongruous with option D, so I will not accept that amendment.
Okay, so let's open this Councilmember Moore. I think you'll light this up. Can you keep it in one minute, please? We have eight minutes to do it.
Sure. Okay, so perhaps if it would be considered that we strengthen the, the lighting for night activities to, say, to prohibit wildlife disturbing night activities with lighting. Something along those lines to make it more clear that, that, because I think we have a kind of gentle language.
Are you making a friendly amendment to the, to the motion?
I'm, if Councilmember Fruin would consider adding the word perhaps prohibit and strengthening that so that basically we don't end up with lights out on the course and people golfing in the dark is, is the aim. If there's some way to get to that so that it doesn't get interpreted as gentle language that they, that isn't.
Councilmember Fruin?
Clear.
That feels unnecessary.
Okay, so that is not accepted. So do we need to extend the ten again? It doesn't look like we're gonna be able to vote by 11:30.
Unless you're going to call a vote in the next few minutes.
Yeah, I am going to move that we extend it to 11:45. May I have a second, please?
On second.
So it's being seconded. Let's vote by light.
Okay, could I attempt another?
Yeah, the, okay, I, I think let's give somebody else a chance. And anybody want to bring a motion or substitute motion? And actually, I would like to bring a substitute motion. So my.
Mayor, mayor, I, we haven't finished that vote to extend yet. Councilmember Chow hasn't, hasn't voted.
It was rejected. Councilmember Moore's friendly motion was rejected by.
To extend to 11:45? The, the motion was to extend the meeting to 11:45?
Yes.
That's what we're voting for right now?
11:45, yes.
Okay, it's in that, yeah, sorry.
Sorry, thank you.
The, it carries unanimously. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So I like to make a substitute motion. I really like motions to be simple and give the, the staff time to give, get, get back to us. So my motion would be to approve, to approve the recommended action, but add all the, you know, suggestions that's being proposed by the council into your future study and bring it back to us. That would be my motion to make it really simple, but also include all the recommendations that's being in the substitute motion, you know, in the friendly amendment that into your considerations when you bring the project back to us. That would be my motion. Do I have a second before, second by Councilmember Moore?
More second.
Okay, so let's have a brief discussion.
Through the mayor, if I may. I think there were a lot of conflicting suggestions made by council. I understand the desire is to encompass all of the suggestions. So there are two questions in front of us. What I'm hearing is the majority of the council would like to keep it as a golf course. How about if we can get directions in terms of what council would like to see coming back? I heard Audubon certification. I also heard cost recovery, but deeper discount. Those are conflicting. I also heard no lights at night, but potentially more revenue to bring cost recovery. Then again, that's costs, that's conflicting. So what I am hearing is golf courts. I, I think that's the majority of council. And if council has trust in staff, we, we will take all the comments that we received tonight and come back with the operation plan that hopefully will satisfy council's direction.
I think that's exactly my proposal is, but my motion is, how do I word it? Maybe we'll just simply say, let's just, I'm gonna, can I take, take back my motion?
You can, you're, you're, you can withdraw your motion.
Yeah, I'm withdrawing my motion to make a new motion. Just I recommend accept of the recommended action by staff. I have a second.
Second.
Okay, it's being moved and seconded. I really like to vote on the substitute motion first. May we vote by light, please?
The substitute motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. And it is, we still have three minutes. I don't think it's enough to do anything.
Yeah, we are, we are adjourned, unless, so without a further motion, we are adjourned by rule.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you very much for staying with us. The meeting is adjourned at 11:27. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you very much for staying with us. The meeting is adjourned at eleven twenty-seven.